All right, everybody. Good evening. Yeah, very rowdy crowd. All right. Why don't we go ahead and get started? Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. I see some of our council members have had more fun than others.
Mm-hmm.
So, reckless fun. Yeah, reckless fun, that's right. We wish Councilman Carter a speedy recovery. But hopefully, everybody's doing well and everybody's refreshed. And we welcome back all the students and parents who are back for the first day of school as well. So why don't we go ahead and get started? I want to first give Councilor Vice Mayor Snyder the opportunity to introduce the next item and then turn it over to staff and our guests.
Thank you very much. If you envision Route 7 in your mind besides being a terribly congested road, from the Potomac River to Tyson's Corner, you have virtually the entire history of America along that road. Everything from the earliest colonial days to the Civil War to Civil Rights Movement. You have virtually every major ethnic group has housing, places of worship, places of business along that road. In fact, the way to look at Route 7 is no longer as a highway but as a main street. So it's about time we start treating it like a main street and dramatically improving the options for people on Route 7 and especially transit. One other point to make in introducing it, which is more city-specific. Back many, many years ago, the city made a decision it did not want metro within its borders. And I think, to some extent, we've paid the price for that in terms of commercial development since. So some of these options give us the opportunity to put Falls Church on a new major transit line in Northern Virginia with some exciting prospects for our business community. So with those comments, I want to turn it over to the city manager to take it from here. And I want to apologize, I may need to leave early to go to an airport for job-related travel this evening. So again, thanks for everyone being here, our colleagues on the council and the planning commission and all the staff and all the citizens that are here, as well as other elected officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. I'm going to turn it over directly to Mr. Paul Stoddard, who will introduce the study and our guests from the NVTC.
Absolutely. Thank you. So just to frame the presentation that you're going to see in a few minutes here, this Route 7 Alternatives Analysis is part of a wider project. It's being done region-wide. Participants are the City of Falls Church, City of Alexandria, Arlington County, Fairfax County. To manage that project, the NVTC, the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, has stepped in. And Mariela Garcia-Kolberg is from that group. And the consultant that's doing the work is Parsons Brinkerhoff. And Mike Flood is from that group there. So they're going to be giving the presentation tonight. So like I said, in terms of geography, it's stretching all the way from Tyson's Corner down to Alexandria. And what you're seeing here, these are sort of the intermediate steps of a Phase 1 analysis. It began back in November of 2012 and it'll finish up in October of this year. The end result for this Phase 1 is to get to a small set of possible modes, whether it's BRT, streetcar, light rail, as well as a small number of routings. So what does it do when it gets to Alexandria? How does it deal with the East Falls Church metro not being on Route 7? So that's what's going to come out of Phase 1, is a small set of options. Phase 2, which will take 12 months to complete, that'll get us down to a single preferred mode and a single preferred routing. Just quickly, I'll touch on funding. Funding for Phase 1 came out of a mix of federal, state, and local funds. Funding for Phase 2 will come out of the NVTA regional pot. It was a project that was selected by the NVTA a couple of months ago for funding. So when that funding issue gets cleared up with the bond validation suit, it could provide funding here for the Phase 2. And with that, I want to turn it over to our presenters.
Okay. See? Okay. Thank you so much for having us, Cindy and Paul. Thank you for inviting us. My name is Mariela Garcia. I do work with the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. And I'm the program manager for the Route 7, which I call actually my baby. And I'm really happy to be here. We're here to do two things that are equally important, to update in where we are in the study and to get your input about what you want to see in Route 7. And that's very important for the consultant as well. Route 7, as you know, we're going to be studying Route 7 from Tyson's Corner all the way to Alexandria, all the way to the metro in Alexandria. So what we're looking for is transit along Route 7. And we think it's important because it will -- she told you I speak too loud. So it's important because it's going to connect the people of Route 7 to outside places, but also people will be able to come to Route 7. And it will hopefully trigger economic development for the area. And it will reduce traffic congestion in Route 7. It will also move, we could, you know, improve transit, improve pedestrian access, improve bicycle paths, whatever the study research says. So it is actually a research-driven study. We all want to see things, but actually, the research is what's going to drive the results of the study. And that's why we actually hired the consultant to do all the research that's necessary. How did we get to the project? Well, it was actually, I don't know if you probably do remember, that Congress Representative Moran earmarked $350,000 for Falls Church to do the alternative analysis study. We needed to come back with a 20% funding. And we got that 50% from the state and 50% from the jurisdiction that Paul mentioned. And we moved forward with $437,000. Well, that is not enough to do an entire alternative analysis study. So with a little help and recommendation from the FDA, we divided the study into two phases. We are now in Phase 1, right here. And Phase 1 is a feasibility study. It's research-driven. It's about what is possible in Route 7. The end result of Phase 1 will be really to come up with five alternatives to move forward and to do deeper research about. And then we'll move to Phase 2. The reason why there is a lag in timing is because, as Paul mentioned, we got funding for NVTA, but we got to wait now until the bond validation suit is over to really start Phase 2 of the project. But at least, you know, we got it funded and Falls Church won't have to put more money in it. So that's kind of good. That will start in March. And the end result of that is hopefully what they used to call a local prefer alternative. That's, you know, alternative analysis is not what the FDA uses anymore, but they still like the people to have a local prefer alternative. And once we're there, we can either move into a small start or a new starts project funded by FDA. So where can you input, give us input? Well, hopefully today, a lot. And there's also a project website. It's route7corridorstudy.com. As the project progresses, you always have the chance to give us public, I mean, input. So does the public. I left Paul with my card. You can certainly email me at any time or call me. As I say, this is my project, so I really want to hear your input. And then as we progress along and the alternatives are chosen, really, at the end, you will have the chance again to decide which one is a local prefer alternative as well. With that, I think I'm going to move it into Mike. Mike's going to talk about all the studies that have been done and the research of those studies.
How are you guys all doing today? Good? Good? Yeah? Good. All right. So I'm just going to run through, we've done quite a bit of technical analysis. And if I ran through it all, we'd be here at about 12 o'clock tonight and everybody would be asleep in about 15 minutes. So I'm not going to do that for you or to you. So what I'm going to do instead is I'm just going to touch on pieces of the technical analysis that were performed. Can you guys see okay? Let me just stand over here, actually. Some pieces of the technical analysis that were performed, so you understand kind of a little bit about the work that was done. And then also, I'll let you know that the full project reports are available for review. So that's basically how we're going to go through tonight. So one of the things that we talked about, and somebody brought it up today, is that what is Route 7? As it goes from Tyson's Corner to the City of Alexandria, those of you that drive it know that it's not one thing. It's a couple of different things. I think we identified something like six or seven different cross-sections, 50 signals, and obviously, a bunch of different land uses along the corridor. So whatever recommendations are made for the corridor, have to recognize that it travels through communities, it has different cross-sections, it's got its different challenges, and whatever recommendations need to be developed, need to recognize that. So we conducted a full corridor inventory to make sure we understand all the conditions in the area. You know, one of the things to keep in mind for any type of rapid transit is it's supposed to be rapid. That's kind of the point of it. So dealing with things like signals, you know, you need to come up with strategies for dealing with the signals, dealing with the queues at signals, if it's traveling in mistraffing, dealing with the infrastructure required to support transit is also important. So whatever recommendations need to fit within the context. Now, also recognizing Route 7 for what it is, we're not going to recommend a metro line extension down the center of Route 7. You know, there's some obvious things that we need to think about, certainly not at grade, you know, probably below grade, probably isn't going to work out either. You're probably not going to get a mono-rail running through Route 7. And then you're probably not going to get heavy rail. You're not going to get VRE running down Route 7. So those are some of the things that are kind of recognized. So then, when we get into some of the technical analysis that was performed, we hired an economic firm, economic assessment firm, to take a look at the market, just the development market in the corridor, to understand what the potential might be. And you can see that they divided the entire corridor up into some sub-markets to conduct their detailed analysis. So the questions that were asked is what could be expected in the corridor over the next 20 or 30 years during the planning horizon year for what we do? So in general, on the economic side, on the employment side, Northern Virginia has been traditionally a strong economic engine. And then, close in Northern Virginia, added about 73,000 jobs from 2002 to 2011. But then there is the reality of the recession and the fact that employment has rebounded and slightly exceeds that 2007 level. Professional scientific and technical services and management of companies represent about 26% of all jobs. So the report behind this has a very detailed technical analysis of the corridor itself. In terms of employment growth, what the economists found was that there are opportunities for office growth in certain of the sub-markets, obviously the strongest of which being Tyson's Corner and the West Alexandria section, but also some opportunities for infill office development here in Falls Church and also the Seven Corners area. It's estimated about a new office construction of about 17.9 million square feet in the corridor by 2040. In terms of demographics, who's kind of living in the corridor? That there's, you know, somebody mentioned earlier that the corridor is very diverse and has a number of different people of different backgrounds and on different income levels. And that about 58% of them are homeowners and less than 8% have no cars. For those of us, we don't have the graphic up here, but one of the things that we found very interesting was the growth in single-person households and the growth in two-person households over the next 20, over the past 20 or 30 years has been fairly dramatic. And households like mine with, you know, a couple of kids are actually somewhat in decline. So there's opportunities for housing growth, but it has to be recognized for the types of housing growth that would support that level of growth. So it's identified that there's a potential for 49,000 new housing units by 2040, 75% of which would recommend to be multifamily dwellings. Again, opportunities are in many places with, for development with Falls Church being identified as potential for infill development. So as far as the development opportunities that occur, there are a number of underutilized properties. There's properties that have been out there, haven't really turned over in a while, so they present opportunities for redevelopment. And it's, as many of you know, that might be in the development industry, it's very difficult to justify tearing out an existing development and putting something new in. So you have to find some incentives to make that happen. Okay. So that kind of is a very small brush of the economic assessment that was performed for the study. So now we get a little bit into what the potential is on the corridor itself. So there's a number of modes that are currently being looked at in the corridor. Light rail, which many of you may know a little bit, which basically can operate either in mixed traffic or its own dedicated guideway. It does have catenary wires for power, which are the overhead wires. That's something to keep in mind. And that most of these rapid transit systems actually get some of their speed by spreading out the distance between stops a little bit. So they don't, for those of you that get in the local bus, I get off at my local bus at the metro station, I think it stops every 50 feet on the way to my house. And so kind of the point of these is to eliminate some of that, those stops at the more regular basis to provide for limited stop service. One of the other modes that's being considered is bus rapid transit, which is similar, can be similar in nature to light rail transit. There's, you can make a lot of investments in stations and does not have the need for overhead wires, obviously. It also provides the opportunity to have different cross-sections. It provides the opportunity to have dedicated guideways in places where there's dedicated guideways. Provides an opportunity to travel in mixed traffic, provides an opportunity to travel. One of the recommendations that we came up with in Montgomery County when we were doing the work there is they had some very constrained sections. So one of the recommendations is to create a single-directional BRT lane down the middle of the road. And the BRT would travel in the same direction as the peak travel. So get the travel advantages of traveling in the travel lane. And then the BRT vehicle in the off-peak direction would travel in mixed traffic, which is fairly light traffic, which wouldn't slow it down all that much. So recognizing the flexibility required for different designs. Streetcar, for those of you that know about Columbia Pike, again, a mode requiring the overhead electrical wires. There's typically more frequent stops. These are typically provided in commercial areas, limited stop service, and typically a little bit slower than LRT. So they provide typically and travel through areas that are ripe for redevelopment or downtown areas, but not necessarily the chosen mode for traveling longer distances at speed. And then, of course, there's buses. One of the things that you always do on studies is say, what could be done to improve existing transit service to the highest level it could be? And then what's the increment between the investment that would take to get to improved transit service at that level to anything approaching a rapid transit system? Anybody have any questions so far? Nothing, huh? Okay. Feel free to interrupt, by the way. I meant to say that at the beginning, but it should be more of a dialogue than me just talking. But I will run through it. Okay. So what we did is, there are some, there are some density values that are typically used for different types of transit treatment. So, you know, very low density gets maybe some, maybe no transit service. A little bit of increased density qualifies you for bus service. So the higher you get, the more you qualify for higher-capacity transit service. So what this does, and it's very poorly put on here, but it starts it from no transit service up to rapid transit service. So the higher, the darker the purple it is, the more indicated, you know, the more opportunities there are for creating higher-capacity transit. This is a population density map. And then we have the same thing for an employment density map. And I wanted to show you one graphic. So what this is, is a graphic of the corridor. And the existing purple is the current development. And the green is the development that's projected to the year 2040, which is, in transportation planning, we always use an out year to try and identify what the potential in the corridor might be. So you can see that there's a fair amount of density that's, might be appropriate for a rapid transit option in the corridor, obviously with Tyson's Corner and the Seven Corners and Falls Church area. And then other areas of the corridor also having density that are specific enough for transit. But you have to kind of keep a graphic like this in perspective, whereas if you overlay the perspective with the Washington DC conditions, you can kind of get a feel for the level of density in the corridor and what might be an appropriate mode. So these are some of the considerations we've been considering. So this is where we hope to get most of your input, actually, because it's a very important question. So the question in, so we're going to connect Tyson's Corner and Alexandria somewhere eventually. So the question is, what happens in Falls Church? There is a East Falls Church and the ability to connect to the Silver Line Station, to the new Silver Line service at East Falls Church. So the question for the corridor is whether it travels down Route 7 the length of Falls Church or whether it should provide access to East Falls Church Station. It's an important question for the viability of the corridor itself, but also for the City of Falls Church. So that's one thing we'd like to get your input here on today. The other thing, so on this end, and it was talked about a little bit tonight, but Alexandria has expressed very little interest in having any type of constructed facility on King Street or on Braddock Road. It's just not realistic for them. So what they see is any connections made on King Street or on Braddock will have to be potentially made with some type of wheeled vehicle. They don't believe that light rail or streetcar is a realistic option along those roads. So what we're looking at is the three potential termini in the Alexandria area currently are the Van Dorn Metro Station, the King Street Metro Station, and then traveling along the current, what they have identified as their Beauregard Corridor to find access to the Van Dorn Metro Station. Those are the three potential options through the City of Alexandria. Yes, sir?
Are they not looking at ice there?
For connection?
The greatest amount of development.
Yeah. Yeah. The guidance, really, they have an existing corridor identified in their master plan, which is the Van Dorn Corridor. So they've asked, their primary priority, I would say, is for this corridor to connect to that corridor and make the connection into Van Dorn. Okay. Sounds great. Thank you. So what's next? So basically, Mariela talked a little bit about it in that, you know, typically, these things are much larger in scope for work. So what we tried to do is we tried to take a whole bunch of the decision points that happen over typically a whole project and jam them into this first phase because we think there are some important findings that come out of here. That include the economic development piece. That includes the, we did a survey of employees and residents in the corridor. And we're also going to be doing the demand forecasting, which is kind of the key element to understanding what the ridership potential is in the area. So what we're doing is we're applying a transportation model, which is specific to the transit mode for the region, to try and understand what the ridership might be. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a corridor-length ridership figure, and then we're also going to have ridership between the stations. So we'll be able to tell which are the more viable links of the network and which are the less viable links of the network. So we were very limited even in the amount of forecasting that we could do. So we ran just two alternatives. We ran the connection straight to King Street and then the connection to Van Dorn to see what the implications of both might be. And then the connection through. So the big picture items for this first phase are to understand questions about mode. We already talked, the City of Alexandria has expressed their opinion on two modes particularly on some of their corridors. But also, what is really viable here? If we run the forecasting exercise and you get very low ridership and the costs for building high-capacity dedicated guideway are very high, then you're not going to go very far in the FDA process. We want to make sure we recognize that as we go in. So for those of you that may work in the transportation facility, but there's PhD statisticians that run these demand forecasting models, and they're never, ever, ever on time. We actually build in the fact that they're going to be laid into all of our projects and they still somehow are able to exceed even that late deadline. So two weeks ago, I was supposed to have the demand forecasting results. I promised it tomorrow, I mean, at the end of this week, and then we have our tech meeting on Tuesday. So I'll have plenty of time to process and get ready for that. But very soon, we'll have the results of that demand forecasting process. And that's kind of a key piece. It's going to be a key decision factor for everybody on what the potential is in the corridor for mode. There are, there is opportunity, other opportunity for input coming up. I'm hoping to present the results of the demand forecasting at the September 18 meeting. So we're running out of time here on actually getting the information together. We can come at the conclusion of Phase 1 and re-present what the findings are on the preliminary analysis if you'd like. And then, as Mariela pointed out, Phase 2 does start after the beginning of the year. The date keeps getting pushed back. But we'll start in March of next year. So during, and as she said, the intent of all this work that we're doing so far and all the work that we will be doing is to tee this thing up so they can enter the federal process very, very efficiently, very quickly. So this is your time for discussion or input. Yes, sir?
Thank you. On this, just curious, the issue of the statisticians being slow and doing --
Late, not slow, late.
Is it because the, basically, the parameters are changing all the time and therefore, it's really more in flux than may seem? Or they're just late?
Yeah. It's a, I would call it, the act of forecasting ridership is critically important. I mean, investment decisions are made on the type of ridership you get in the corridor. So they take their job very seriously about what they do. And they, when they're in the business long enough, they develop a very strong sense of paranoia about that whole idea. So they run through a series of checks and they keep going back and rechecking, rechecking, rechecking all of their analysis. The demand forecasting analysis is literally a bunch of math equations laid out over a corridor. So that's why the statisticians get involved. So it's more of a question of them feeling like they've been able to spend enough time going back and quality-controlling all of their work and checking all the potential errors and making sure that everything that they've created as representative of the corridor is correct. So it's not so much a fact that they're slow or not good at what they do, it's just they're very, very careful about, yeah.
Isn't what I was thinking that either those, I just, often, when information is late, the user has been making changes
Yeah.
Right up to the end
Yeah.
And the person who's supposed to produce the output is unable to produce the quality piece within the timeframes that were originally stated. If there's a lot of change, I'm just trying to ascertain if, in fact, the users aren't so sure about what's happening and they want various and sundry other alternatives tested to see. So just trying to get an idea of how solid the data will be when it comes out.
Yes. The data will be solid. What happens is they do a lot of geographic checks. They do a lot of things like what's the density at the various stations? And they do a lot of analysis on the additional parameters that go into forecasting. But it's certainly, it's nothing that, it's nothing that they're being asked to do additional things or to, we're trying to manipulate their process at all, if that's what you're asking.
Why don't we turn it over first to the planning commissioners for their input? And then we'll come back to council members.
Well, yeah, I had a bunch of questions, but, so I didn't understand, and maybe this is the purpose of this meeting, but, so is the, why are we doing Route 7 as opposed to a connection to the Silver Line? Or can you expand on that a little bit more?
Yeah. The, so the question about, you know, the question about Route 7, so if we provide access to the Silver Line Station, you might bypass some of downtown Falls Church to provide that access. You could provide a way, if you're coming from the south or whatever, up to the transit station and loop around downtown and then back, back north. So the question, and then the other question is, there's two questions here. There's one is, is how are people traveling and do they want access to that Silver Line Station as, or Silver, Orange Line Station as their primary mode of travel? And the second is, is And the second is, is what delay does that cause the people that are trying to pass through? Like if there's someone trying to get from Seven Corners to Tyson's Corner, you've now imposed minutes of delay on that trip to allow them access up to Tyson's Corner through, through Falls Church and up to Tyson's Corner. So that's really what we're trying to understand. And, and in Phase 1, we're not, we're not going to get rid of either the Route 7 alignment or the, or the metro access alignment because it's an important question. But it's important for us to understand whether the, this elected body has a preference for not seeing it on Route 7 or providing it as access to, to the metro station.
Well, I guess what I don't understand is you have, in the demand analysis, you have a Silver Line going in.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, who cares, really? I mean, like you, you have this, you know, billion-dollar project.
Right.
How do you, you sort of not, I don't know how you overlook that.
Yeah, yeah, you don't. I, I don't think, and actually when we tested the, the demand, we provided that access to that station because it's a big question, because a lot of people are going to want to be accessed in that station. So, but the, the concern was whether not having the stations along the, the Route 7 in the, in the main part of Falls Church is going to give you the, the, the access that you want in that, in that main part of town.
So the only other question I have, and you have this, this thing, think outside the car, so I've just always been curious when this first came up and we talked about it, I think in a work session or, or something, you know, we're three and a half, I made that up, but I think it's sort of true. I think we're three and a half miles from, from here to Tyson's Corner, to the mall. You know, if you want, it seems like you could ride a bike there, but you know, you can't. I mean, it would be, no, no offense to you, but I mean, it would be dangerous to, to do that. And I mean, no one really does that. And I was always sort of curious how, if there is a way, if, you know, if you could connect to the W N O D, go up through Vienna into Tyson's. I mean, it just seems like there has got to be a way, and I, I didn't see you mention that in, in what you talked about.
Yeah, the, you know, the, the bicycle and pedestrian connections are not part of a transit analysis, but typically they're part of the design recommendations. Like typically, the complete streets ideal is part of the recommendations if they are the policy of Virginia Department of Transportation and the, and the town of the city of Falls Church. We try, we'll try and include those as part of the cross-section for, for what, for what we're looking at. But that's the, that's the length of the Route 7 corridor.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be, and I'm speaking only for my, I mean, I'm not speaking as a planning commissioner or anything, but I would just say personally, I mean, we're so close to Tyson's Corner and yet it's so far away. And, and it doesn't seem, I mean, if it's just sort of as a design feature or whatever, it's not getting any closer. It's, it's not, and I don't know whether you, you know, you put a, a bike lane over the street, I don't know how you do it, but it seems like it's such a, a small distance to cover.
It is, and the purple lines, the purple line in Maryland is, which is all, which is, which is a similar project actually because it kind of cuts across, you know, it's kind of an outer ring around the city, just like Route 7 is, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not radial access out from the city. So what they've started to look at, they have some obviously very heavy pedestrian areas as well and some areas of bicycle travel. So they're looking at different types of bicycle access. They started with the on-road shared lane, and now they're actually transitioning to the side path design along the entire corridor to provide that wider bicycle pedestrian environment down the length of certain, certain parts of that corridor. So something like that could provide a better, obviously a better environment, but there needs to be some understanding of that you're basically changing the entire condition out on that, out on that roadway. And then also recognizing that you need to get the people across the street that are riding transit. That's the piece that's often forgotten, is that you need to have a very viable pedestrian environment to give these people a chance to, to cross the street once they're, once they're on and off. So in the story, I always, I don't know if anybody's ever goes down to Rehoboth or the Rehoboth area, Lewis, Delaware, they actually have a transit, transit line that goes from Rehoboth to Lewis and then back down again. It's about, I think, eight miles. They have two pedestrian crossings on that entire, on that entire roadway, and they wonder why their transit ridership's not higher. We, you really have to consider the, the needs of the rider and the pedestrian in, in your design. Yes, sir?
In terms of an either/or. In other words, it's, it's a straight shot back and forth.
Yeah.
This corner is going through a rebound. It's a desire line.
Yeah, so what's been done before is basically, you know, like, like every other bus, you know, like every other bus system, so one bus would come from Tyson's and then down Route 7, and another bus would come from the metro station and provide out Route 7, and then on the southern end of Route 7, you have multiple buses running in the same, in the same condition. So that could be, that could be a question, and that's almost like a service planning question, which we'll, we'll get to much later in Phase 2, but it's something we can, we can consider certainly.
Okay, so my comments are also about the Silver Line, because the beginning, when we first looked at this, we talked about having that connector. But like you said, if we were to do that, we're basically cutting off a piece of 7 and coming back. But then I thought about, if you were to want it to be on the Silver Line, like if you're in Alexandria, you want to get on the Silver Line to go to Dulles or whenever it gets out there, what difference would it make if you got on at where it's orange and silver and it's a little bit messier, a lot more people, than if you got on in Tyson's? Why wouldn't we just have it in that Tyson Station on the Silver Line? Because that would be basically a more straight shot.
Right.
And people in the city, if they wanted to go on the Silver Line, would probably, I mean, I walk or I bike to it because I'm not that far, no one's really that far from... So I'm, I'm kind of like, you know, my, so at the beginning, I really thought, yeah, we do need to do that little jag over there, but now I don't think so because the, there's Tyson Stations right along Route 7, and if we could get it to one of those stations, that's actually, for someone coming from Alexandria or Bailey Crossroad, that's just the same.
Yeah.
To get on the Silver.
Yeah.
And they don't really need access to the orange because they have the blue, which pretty much, you know, gets them around to Roslyn, and if they need to go down Arlington, they go that way.
Right.
So I, I think that that's my thought, why even have it? Because the city is not that useful, we're, it'd be better for us for it to stay on 7. And if you want to get to the Silver from one of these other locations, why not just get on in Tyson's? So I don't know if the study has pushed that far into Tyson's, but I think it should.
Yeah, yeah, we, we provide access to the Silver Line Station.
Okay, yeah, then I'm not sure what the purpose of doing it in the city would be. And I reiterate, back on the biking thing, I work in Old Town on the Masonic Temple side and bike to work day, I could not figure out a route that it felt safe. So any bike in both ways would be great.
Yeah.
Because Alexandria is really not that far either.
Well, it's, it's, it's actually, it's actually an interesting dialogue in both modes because we created the, the roads for autos, and now we have to go back and figure out how to fit the bikes, bikes in. It's the same thing with transit. How do we take this auto environment and fit, fit transit right in there? But certainly, transit and biking obviously fit very well together, and, and that's why WAMADA supports things like the Red Bike Program and other things because they, they see it as expansion of their network, you know, provide greater access for, for more people.
Let me just offer a couple of comments about the background of the project. There were really two objectives set forth when Congressman Moran got us the money for this grant. The first one was to get our businesses on a major transit line to support economic development, and Arlington has proven worldwide the importance of transportation, not just to move people, but also to push forward significant economic and business development. So something that removes a huge portion of our business section would appear not to subscribe to that and have exactly the opposite effect. The second thing is to come up with a transit system that people want to ride so that it will reduce vehicle congestion, reduce air pollution and all those other things. And sort of complementary to that, of course, would be the bike and pedestrian assets as well. So those were the two original objectives for the city working with Congressman Moran to get this whole process started, and it seems to me they're objectives which we ought to maintain, but it's up to this group to decide that.
Okay, I, I have a question about Alexandria. But it seems to me that they're opting out of anything but buses in a certain corridor.
What they're opting out of is, if you know King Street as you're going down into the city of Alexandria, there's, they're, they're opting out of, of a constructed, dedicate, some type of guideway system down that, down that hill into the city of Alexandria. So that's, I'd say light rail and streetcar are not their desired option along that corridor. But they would prob, and even bus rapid transit might not be what they're most interested in, but is still on the table, I would say.
And so would they be allowed to do that if you're trying to get someone from the end of Route 7 all the way up to Tyson's Corner and a rather large section is being opted out of?
Well...
Is that acceptable?
Well, I mean, it's, it's more of a question, like, successful transit systems connect places to places, right? And, and actually, very few people are going to ride, I mean, percentage-wise are going to get on it at King Street or Van Dorn and ride all the way to Tyson's Corner. It's going to be people in Seven Corners going to the metro station or Seven Corners coming to Falls Church, or people from Falls Church going to Tyson's Corner. Those are going to be much more of the trips, kind of the shorter trips. It's not going to be so much the end-to-end that happens. So once you get into Alexandria, you're trying to create that same type of market. Where are the, where do the people want to go along these corridors? So the, the analysis in Tyson's Corner is going to be part about when people are traveling down Route 7 and are trying to access part of Alexandria or part of the metro station system, what's the most efficient for them, but also for the trips there within the city of Alexandria itself, what's the, what's the best mode?
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking this question is because between one block west of Seven Corners, down to another of our main streets, which is Washington Street, is our historic corridor. All the, it's totally, there, there are no businesses there. It's all historic and it's all residential. And it just seems to me that city of Alexandria doesn't want rapid transit, you know, the light rail or, or anything fixed, to go down through their historic section. We should be thinking about our historic section as well.
I was waiting for your response. Did you have a... Okay. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
In the study, one of them has to do with the, you know, the, the physical, or the width of Route 7. Is it, and I was, I kept thinking about the fact that it doesn't look as wide in certain places, you know, at a Falls Church, et cetera, for us to be able to expand it with other systems of, of traffic? Can you talk a little bit about that? I mean, in your study, did you, did you find that? It's just something that, you know, just occurred to me as I was thinking about...
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So, so the, the real, the real looks at what the cross-sections will be is going to happen in the later phase. Really what we're trying, this, the, the first phase is kind of a feasibility study. What makes sense? It does, rapid transit even makes sense in the corridor? But those things will certainly be addressed. And so one of the things you're, you're looking about is, even when we brought up the things, there are light rail systems that operate in mixed traffic. You know, they, they, they don't have much room for a cross-section, so they, you know, they reconstruct the street to allow the light rail to travel down in what's an existing travel lane. So it's, it's not, the one, the thing to keep in mind is that it's, it's not always an additional 30 feet of right-of-way that we need to, to create a dedicated guideway. If there's opportunities for that, you want to take advantage of that because it provides for that, again, that rapid transit. But in areas, I mean, all, all over the country, in areas where it's constrained, they're coming up with, with things like peak directional lanes for the, for the rapid transit vehicle because they recognize they can't get it in there. They're coming up with things like Q jump lanes, which is, so basically what happens is, and I have a video I should have brought, but if you're, if a transit vehicle is coming up to an intersection, and as everybody knows and lives in this area, the intersection backs up, they call that the Q. So what a Q jump lanes is, is just a bypass lane where a transit vehicle can pull into that Q jump, it pulls all the way up to the traffic light, the, the, a transit signal says, "Go ahead, transit bus," and then the bus pulls back into, into the normal corridor, and then the rest of the traffic is released. So there's, there's, there's treatments that aren't 35 feet of construction that still start to move towards that, towards the rapid transit. And I think that's the reality for the city of Falls Church, that's the reality for anything that happens in the, in the areas that city of Alexandria is concerned about. There might be some areas along the corridor where we can go ahead and provide that dedicated guideway to try and get those speeds up to make it more competitive with auto traffic, but, so it, it is going to be, and that's what I showed the cross-section to very beginning, it's going to be a challenging discussion about what, what the appropriate mode and then what the appropriate design might be.
And then just quickly, as a follow-up to that, I think it's Mariella?
Yes.
You mentioned something about a local preferred alternative. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure, but I think Michael has more experience than I do on it, but usually at the, usually at the end of the study, oh.
Yes, sorry. Usually at the end of a study, while, when you go through all the process and you, you have your four or five defined alternative, you do more research, and then you compare one to the other, you look at the ridership and you look at the cost, and you talk to people, and you will, all together, and through the process, you'll choose a local preferred alternative that you think you should move forward. So let's say that is light rail train. You say, then you say, okay, this is what we want, this is what the community has decided, FTA, this is what we, you move that process forward because you want to construct something, you need money for that, and, and you're going to ask the federal transit administration for that. So that's why I mean by a local preferred alternative. Though I'm not sure that, that term is used anymore.
Okay, okay, so it's really essentially a menu of options that you give to...
No, at the, at the end we'll have one.
Oh, okay.
One mode and one alignment that we can move forward.
You, you take an alignment and a mode to, to federal transit administration, you don't take multiple alignments and multiple modes as your options. You can, so, and typically the locally preferred alternative is actually not Mike saying it's a local preferred alternative, it's a elected official, a high elected official saying, this is what we're interested in, this is what we're supporting, this is what we like to move forward with federal, federal government, we like your, we like to enter into your process.
And, and just to reiterate, it goes through a public hearing process, so the communities have to, we have to have input from the community. I, I don't know if anybody remembers Columbia Pike, all that they went through to get their streetcar. That's exactly what would have to go. So it's not something that will happen immediately, it's a process that we have to go through.
I have a quick question. Since this is like a plan, like 20 years in the future, do you guys do any analysis of future technologies like autonomous vehicles? Does that factor in at all?
We don't, we don't look at those directly, but, because the, the, we do look at advanced technology, as we talked a little bit about, the, the traffic signals and, and things like the, there's a transit signal priority, which is basically the, transit vehicle has a, a radio on it, and it lets the signal know it's coming, and the signal will delay, delay the end of the green cycle or shorten the red cycle to provide some additional access. Things like automated systems are not typically part of, of what we are because they're not important to understanding the demand. You know, how it operates isn't important, it's how often it operates and what type of vehicle you have and what your alignment is. Those are the things that you need to identify to enter in, and then the, the significant design questions are answered once you're in the FTA, FTA process. And one of the things that I can or cannot point out here, but this is a, this is a planning process, and in order to, in order to get a final approval from the FTA, you actually have to have completed a planning and an environmental process both. And so when we get to the end of even Phase 2, we will not have completed the NEPA documentation you need to enter into the FTA process, so that's going to have to be addressed. If, if you, if we present, basically, if we present all the information to you guys, you say, yes, that's something we want, we really want to come behind one of these programs, then you're going to have to deal with the probably very limited environmental impacts before you, before you can move into, into FTA program. you, before you can move into, into FTA program.
Why don't we turn it over to the council and just go down the, down the road? Phil?
Thank you. So, if, as Ruth said, the locally preferred alternative here happened to be wheeled vehicles, would the process that we're going through here help provide us with information as to how we could get more ridership on such vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll, yeah. It, it all has to do with speed. I mean, you're basically trying to make this travel mode as competitive against getting in a car and driving yourself. That's what it's all about.
Okay, I hear, I hear that speed's important. I just did a quick focus group study before I came to the meeting of my 23-year-old daughter. I said, "Why don't, why don't you ride the bus?" And I find it typical of her generation that most of them don't. And her, you know, two quick answers were essentially the nature of the stop, she's a big, big metro rail rider, big train rider when she went to school in Philly, nature of the stop, train stations, you know where the stop is, it's a secure place, it's defined. Bus stops are just some random patch of gravel on the corner. And, and two, and kind of related to that, I guess, the, the sort of predictability of the arrival. You know, these kids are used to following wherever they all are on their GPS on their phones, and they cannot understand why they cannot do the same for a bus that is gonna come at a specific time to a specific place. So, it's, I mean, those things are related, the latter, of course, is related to speed, but the former is really more kind of an architectural thing that we've talked about here in terms of upgrading our bus shelters and making the environment for people who ride the buses look like something that we value, because right now, it looks god-awful in most places.
Yeah, I agree, and those are, those are two excellent points in that. And typically, high-capacity transit systems are not your, your father's or our transit system. You know, you don't just run a Metro bus out there and say, "Well, some people are gonna get on because we made it a little bit faster." You have to, so typically, their, their station areas are, you know, you invest in the station areas, you, you create environments that are comfortable and interesting, and you, and you provide service levels, you know, every 10 minutes, every 15 minutes, that are reliable, and you also provide a travel time that's reliable, which is, which are the, you know, sometimes you can get on a bus, it takes you 45 minutes, sometimes it takes you 20 minutes. The intent of this whole thing is to create a reliable and efficient system so that people can get on every, you know, they know it's gonna be there every 10 or 15 minutes, it's only gonna take them 15 minutes to get up to Tyson's Corner. I'll, I'll ride that without, without question. It's gonna be, you know, a higher-end bus, it's gonna be, they'll have next bus, next bus programs available. So, that's, that's definitely part of the wholesale job, particularly for your daughter and people just like her.
Thanks, Phil. Ira?
I would, I would certainly echo Phil's comments, both because of my son, who would like to take the bus more often than he does, and myself. I mean, the buses are, I didn't think about the safety issue, but I completely agree. But it's not sometimes two minutes late, it's 10 minutes late. And in my line of work, that's okay, but if I were a cashier, you know, at the Safeway and I had to punch in at nine o'clock, I can't do that. And, and I think there is a clear economic disparity, which has to be addressed at some, at some point. I think if, you know, more middle-class suburban folks were riding the bus, perhaps there'd be more effort at getting the bus where it's supposed to be going. But that's, that's a whole demographic issue that ought to be. So, so you can put more buses on the road, but unless you take that, that issue seriously, you know, it's, it's not gonna really matter. And the second, I would just, I would just echo Mr. Snyder's comments, Jim Snyder's comments, that it seems absolutely intuitive that you want to link the Silver Line with Route 7. I mean, I can't imagine that we don't. And any sort of a whip-down Roosevelt makes a lot of sense to me. I would, I take Melissa's point, but I would rather see more Falls Church incorporated into the, into the design, and I think something that just gets you from point A to point B, given that East Falls Church is harder to get to Route 7 than from West Falls Church. And I think that would be a, a grave mistake on our part if we, if we cut out some sort of relatively easy access. Right, right.
Thanks. So, two points. One, just wanted to echo the comments made by Jim Snyder and also Councilwoman Barry as far as the linkage with Silver Line. I think that's gonna be critical for the city. And I think it really ties back to really one of the drivers for this whole exercise, and that's to ensure that we have economic viability in the city, and that we serve our businesses and our, our residents at the same time. So I think making sure that that connection with the Silver Line is there is gonna be really critically important. I don't want us to be in a situation where, you know, decisions were made to bypass us and we missed the boat again.
Missed the boat again.
And, and I really appreciate Vice Mayor Snyder raising that point. So I think those linkages are gonna be very important. If we look at how we're doing some of our planning to come, I think they're gonna be centered around that. And I think we really need to look at some of the things that Arlington has done to really capitalize on their transportation needs. So those are the, the two points I wanted to make. I think that goes more towards the alignment solicitation for views that you've had. As far as mode?
It's kind of fun to watch.
I don't, as a, as one council member, I don't really have a view on mode. What I will say, a mode that I hope is being taken off the table and is not part of this process is somehow expanding Route 7 for further vehicular traffic. So, sort of an elephant, pink elephant in the room, but I know that others may be thinking about that outside of this room. I, for one, as one council member, would not be supportive of it. If it means expansion for dedicated lanes, that's something that we can explore, but if we're talking just pumping more traffic through the corridor by adding a normal traffic lane.
Cars, right?
Yeah, by cars, by cars. I'm not talking about the.
Vehicular too.
I'm talking about vehicular cars, not rapid transit. Thanks for the clarification.
Could you, could you identify the alignment for the, for the corridor? You guys are talking about access to East Falls Church, how would you do that alignment specifically so we can, we can?
I'm gonna defer to Jim. One point that I'll also make, just, just for staff's, staff's purview on this.
I think the alignment we always talked about from the beginning was that it went from Seven Corners, I guess, I'm not sure how you're gonna make that little maneuver, but it's Wilson to Roosevelt, and Roosevelt's the straight, and then it's back down 29. But this is why I kept thinking about, is this really valuable to us? Because let's suppose there's a stop in Seven Corners, it goes to East Falls Church Metro, there's a stop there, then it goes back down 29 and a stop there. I'm not really sure, you know, it's not gonna pick up citizens inside the city exactly, at least going that way, you know?
But could you do a?
Well, at least in my neighborhood, it wouldn't help me at all because the stops would be on either side of me, and I would end up walking to the metro like I do now.
Could you do a stop in Seven Corners, a stop, say at, I'm just trying to think, could you use some other vehicle? I'm not suggesting that you take, you, you, yeah, I'm not, I'm thinking of some alternative shuttle between.
Like a shuttle. Well, see, I thought about the shuttle thing, and then I remember our George issues.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, we haven't talked about the George experience, but we've got experience with a shuttle that didn't.
Yeah, so I'm just, yeah, I'm not, I mean, I think we're.
Well, no, it basically, again, took people to the metro stops.
Right, well, that's what people used it for.
And theoretically, it gave more neighborhood access, but it didn't do it in any meaningful way that people thought it was worth doing.
Why don't we give?
I would think that what we need at, at some point in the report.
I think I started this.
At some point in the report, we need an idea of, I know you can't really figure it out without the mode, but what, what stops we're talking about. You guys must have an idea of what the best corridor is as well, what will work the best for the modes that you're looking at. So I think that we need maybe a diagram that, what, what the, what the experts think would work.
Well, I mean, the local experts are you guys, that's why we're here asking you where the alignment would be.
Well, I don't think we're the experts of transportation in terms of who's gonna get, well, that's what I'm saying, though. I don't think this little jag to the side is actually that valuable for people in the city. So I think that's the issue.
Yep.
What I was trying to get at was, you know, this is a long-term project, we'll take probably.
Hopefully not, but.
I worked on it in Arlington.
Right, right.
But the point was that, not to say that it wouldn't come out Route 7 from Tyson's to Alexandria, but that there could be a intermodal, an interconnector, if you will, that went back and forth to the East Falls Church Station, up through Roosevelt, and then coordinating with the redevelopment that's being envisioned for Seven Corners, so you might have a transfer or connector at Route 7 that would go from there, back and forth as a direct shot to the Silver Line hub, which then gives people an option of going downtown. Let's remember, there's downtown, there's Vienna, and there's Tyson. So, the east end of the city has a lot of industrial zoning that's well-zoned for potential development without negatively impacting the residential areas. And Seven Corners is going through a very visionary reimagining of its properties, which might include a crossing of Route 50 and creating a new core, so there's some very interesting planning going on. So you might end up with something where you have an inter, a transfer station at Seven Corners and Route 7, and possibly Wilson Boulevard and Roosevelt, which would give you Arlington, Arlington, Fairfax, and, and, and the city of Falls Church, three jurisdictions, with basically a back-and-forth line with several million feet of development potential that could happen relatively quickly. And so that could be, you know, a spur line that would just be going back and forth, not a detour, but a separate line, not to detract from the Route 7 Tyson's to Alexandria route, but to provide, you know, a quick connection to folks who wanna go downtown or Vienna or out to the Silver Line. And help connect those development areas which are, would be a few minutes away from Metro to an existing Metro where FEDOT is proposing to possibly, where they're putting a request out to look for intense development over 66 as an air rights development project. So, you know, we were assuming possibly two and a half FAR on the, on the 40 acres of, you know, industrial and commercial land that's in the city over time, which it could, could easily be done if, if it made sense economically. But, so there's a lot of development potential in those areas that are zoned commercial now.
Thanks, Jim. Ron?
Well, I, I think this all sounds good and it's great to plan, but none of this is gonna happen with a whole lot more political will than this city has ever demonstrated on a project like this. And I, I'm sorry, you know, we've got a repeated history. There's a reason the Metro doesn't go through here, and a lot, there were people who wanted it to come through here. And at the end of the day, anything that promotes any kind of significant change quite often gets shot down in this city. So people have to think about this and what's feasible, and have some commitment to this in the long term. And I, and I say that from somebody who lived here in 1983 and saw the same arguments going on that, that go on today. Not a lot has changed since then. One of the things that got mentioned was the Complete Streets Project. Well, that one's got shot down fairly recently by this council when we tried to talk about a pedestrian plan and having sidewalks so you could even walk around within the city, much less get to Tyson's Corner. So there's gonna have to be a reevaluation of that part of it. In, in terms of development, there's gonna have to be some longer-term outside-the-box thinking about where development's actually gonna go, and it doesn't always go just where we want it. Sometimes you gotta work with the market and say, "Gee, it's trending in a certain place, let's facilitate it there." And we have a way of saying here, and what I've noticed in my years here, is that if it doesn't go where we want it, we're not gonna have it at all. And so, again, it bypasses us and goes somewhere else. Maryfield's looking very good right now as a result of that. And thank, also, I've been going to a lot of these meetings on the longer term, the 20, 30-year plans, and if you look at those maps, everybody west of us does have Route 7 looking like a big superhighway where they're putting in lots of above, getting rid of the acrid intersections. And so, there're gonna be a whole lot of cars heading in regardless of what we do, and they gotta go somewhere. So that's gotta be factored in somehow to this regional cooperation. I, you know, they're not just gonna stop at the border here. I, I drive Route 7 all the way out to Pass Leesburg every day to get to work in Point of Rocks, and I've seen how the traffic's increasing and what's happened in Loudoun County. So there's a lot being done to fuel a lot more just in terms of car traffic on the edge that's gonna have to go somewhere, and somebody's gonna have to deal with that problem. Now, is some of that gonna shift and end up stopping in Tyson's? I don't know, but that's another piece of it that needs to go on the table if we're gonna deal with this.
Thanks, Ron. Dave?
A couple of comments. One, you asked what route you would prefer, and I guess I would prefer what was discussed a few minutes ago, something going down Roosevelt, maybe through, in front of Eden Center, down Roosevelt, picking up the East Falls Church Metro Station, and then going up Lee Highway, and then turning right on Broad Street. That would hit the majority of our commercial areas. And I think new and improved transit is critical to development. I think we've seen that in the region in recent history, that transit-oriented development is really the way to go for economic development, like plenty of us have seen it in Arlington. And I hope we don't miss that opportunity. I think looking to the past and to cars and to wide highways and no pedestrian, no bicycle access is a mistake. And I think Phil's daughter has it right with the buses. It would, if you ask again, what mode of transportation I would prefer, it would not be buses, even rapid buses, fancy buses. We've got fancy buses right now. Every time a new bus comes out, it's gonna solve problems, and it doesn't, it's just the next-generation fancy bus we're waiting for. But I would, I think the street, streetcars are something we should be looking at. I mean, it's, it's gonna be really critical how this comes out of the box in Arlington and Alexandria, but I think there's an opportunity to connect Bailey's Crossroads all the way down 7 to Tyson's Corner and really create an intermodal area where we've got, you know, all sorts of folks from all different parts of the region connected and using mass transit instead of getting in cars. So I would encourage that, and encourage you to look at things, and maybe this is beyond the scope of what you're doing, but in these rapid recharge, streetcars and things like that where they don't need to have overhead wires, there are some that are being kind of considered in the future, and this may be a while, but I would absolutely consider solutions that don't involve wires if they are to be, to be had in the future. I, let me see what else I've got here as far as notes. I mean, creating the pedestrian area, the bike area, just that, that full experience is the way to go, in my opinion, it's the future. Creating wide boulevards where cars can go 60 miles an hour down your, your public streets is not the solution to this city's problems or the region's problems, in my opinion. So, whatever that's worth, thank you.
He, he did make one point that I think is just important to reiterate, in that there are electrified transit systems that can travel for limited distance without the overhead wire. They can, there, there's either underground, but they're a little, tend to be a little bit more expensive, or they can be run on a charge until they get to the next electrical infrastructure. So, and, and, you know, they're, they're used a lot in Europe, and, you know, like the public squares where they don't wanna have the catenary wires, they just have these, these other systems there. So, I didn't mean to imply that it would automatically, you'd have some huge brown telephone pole with big electrical wires hanging off either side. And even the, even the catenary wires themselves, I mean, people are looking at aesthetics and trying to make these things more aesthetically interesting and fit into the downtown. So there are some options for that design as well.
Right. Why don't we just wrap it up? Thank you very much, and I think we'll probably circle back with staff and get back to you with anything that we have. And the one thing I'll just mention to staff and for the benefit of the NDTC and also our consultants is my name, given that this is likely to go from, to the federal government at some point, can't be included in the documents, et cetera. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why don't we move to the next item, which is the zoning text amendment?
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, members of council, Chair Rogers, members of the planning commission. We have two proposed zoning text amendments before you. The first one would remove assisted living as a byright use in the B1 limited business zoning district. The, what that would, and I'll describe that in a little bit more detail. Then the second one would be a zoning text amendment to require a 20-foot front yard setback for commercially-zoned properties on Broad Street and Washington Street. First, just in terms of what these ordinances do, sorry, excuse me. If you look at the text of the zoning text amendments on line, the zoning, the text changes start on line 36 of the, of the first item. So what we would propose doing is at line 43, strike the word "assisted living facilities" on the list of principal uses permitted by right in the B1 district. And then, in the subsequent section of the zoning code, where it lists conditional uses permitted by special use permit, list assisted living facilities. Then in the additional supplementary regulations that are in section 48-867, that notes that, that special use permits are subject to approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then it carves out an exception for two types of special use permits that are approved by the city council. And those are drive-through facilities, drive-through banks, or drive-through restaurants. And then second, the item that's relevant to this discussion in section 2, which would be that hospitals, rest homes, nursing homes, assist- which would be that hospitals, rest homes, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and that's the new text that would be added at line 76 of the staff report, would be subject to approval through the special use permit and by city council resolution. The, first, just a little bit of background on this item. As the planning commission and the city council are aware, we do, we are in discussions right now with a developer of a potential assisted living facility in the B1 district on the site that is, currently has a Burger King on it. And we have an application pending for, for an assisted living facility at that site. That application is for a five-story facility. This would, with a zoning text amendment, this would allow the council to approve the use as opposed to simply the height special exception that the developer has requested in their application. So that's some brief background on this. We have had a briefing of that proposed development to the Economic Development Committee of the city council, and that occurred several months ago. And in subsequent follow-up discussions, it is through discussions with the EDC that there's been discussion about this zoning text change. Also, by way of background, it is, in terms of our review of the legislative history, the allowing assisted living as a byright use in the B1 districts is something that was subject to a zoning text amendment in the late 90s to allow it as a byright use. Prior to that, it was a conditional use along with the other conditional uses of hospitals and that type of, of human care type of use in the B1 district. And so this would essentially take it back to the way the zoning code was prior to that change in the late 1990s. I also just want to note that Gary Fuller and our zoning administrator have worked through the past week just to consider all the different options. Of course, any time you make a change to the zoning code, there are always more ramifications than you initially might think of. So we've tried to keep this as narrow into this subject as possible. We did have some discussion about having assisted living facilities potentially be by special exception, similar to mixed-use developments. And after considering the implications of that, given the fact that assisted living seems to fit in this conditional use permit where it is housed with very many other similar uses, like hospitals, nursing homes, convalescent care types of facilities, we would recommend that that's a natural place for this type of use to be considered in the zoning text, in the zoning code. By contrast, the special exception ordinance is for height and to allow residential uses like condominiums or apartments in their, in their business districts if they meet a long list of tests of exemplary, of the exemplary nature of those projects. And, and so we think that this is, is the neater fit for the type of use, but we certainly expect that this text will benefit from the, if it does move forward on first reading, which is our recommendation, that it will benefit from public comment and from the planning commission's review before it's brought back to the city council on second reading.
Thank you. Why don't we turn it first to any questions that the planning commission members have?
It seems to me to be, I'm a little bit concerned that assisted living could fit under principal uses permitted by right, institutions for human care. I'm sorry.
I thought it was on. Number two, institutions for human care. I'm just wondering, could that possibly be something that assisted living facilities could fit under if they really wanted to push it?
Let me ask Mr. Fuller if he would care to comment on that and how that part of the code has been interpreted in the past. In section, in the list of permitted uses in B1, I think your question is, is one of the byright uses is institutions for human care, and how that's been interpreted by the zoning administrator in the past?
This, this is the copy of the zoning code, if you don't have it in front of you. So it's listed as item, as number two under the byright uses?
So under the B1, it was, I guess, institutions for human care, is the secession, number two. In terms of assisted living, it's also... Yeah, I think that's, that's the only listing.
Because I don't see that.
Let's see.
Assisted living facility.
I think we just need to check the definition as to what, what that use is. We do have a definition, for instance, for residential institutions. And assisted living seems to fit most neatly under that definition of residential institutions. I would just note by way of, sort of in the background information of this, that residential institutions are listed as a byright use in our T zones. Then, I think in the late 90s, assisted living was carved out as, as one subgroup of residential institutions and allowed by right in our B1 districts. So effectively, what, what this zoning text amendment is a fairly narrow bore attempt to essentially repeal what was done in the late 90s. I think that's probably the simplest way to look at what we're doing.
I understand, I don't have a problem with, with the suggested change.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if...
We might be confusing things by that, by that definition. So I think what we need to do is just check the definition for what that is. And I don't recall it being defined.
Institutions for human care. I mean, if an assisted living facility isn't that, I don't know what it is.
Actually, actually, it's not number two, because I thought this was one-sided. I didn't see the use. It's number 16 on the back, assisted living facilities were specifically listed under B1.
I know that, but so is, so are institutions for human care.
Yeah. And then we have a definition in the zoning code on residential institutions. And that talks about, I think, what the manager was talking about in terms of different facilities for human care other than assisted living, or it could include assisted living in a way, the way the definition is, if you look at it. But assisted living has its own separate definition in the zoning code.
Can I ask for one pause? I, I think council members may have a different document than what Ruth is referring to. Our document...
I'm talking about the full zone code. I just looked up to see what was allowed.
She did her additional homework.
She did additional homework.
That's right. So she's, at line 42, where it says, "Principal uses permitted by right, 1 through 15..."
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought, where it said, "No change."
That's right.
In the next staff report, if we go forward, if we can just have the whole list.
Just the whole list, okay.
Well done.
There's a definition in here, but I don't remember.
Sorry, Ruth, to jump in, but...
No, that's, that's fine. As I said, I'm supportive of this change.
Other planning commission members? All right. Why don't we go down to council members? Mr. Duncan?
When we talked about this at the EDC meeting, and I think again at the mayor's meeting, others felt more strongly united about it, so I'll not take a lot of time here. I guess I'd like to listen to further here what others conclude on this. What you said, as I understand it, is that the current proposal for the assisted living facility is not, it's not unrelated to this, but it's not directly connected to this. In other words, that proposal can be considered and approved or dismissed on its merits, regardless of what we do here. Is that the case or not?
Yeah, I think that's, that is the case. The, that, that project, as, as the zoning text is before you, the, that project requires a special exception due to height. They've asked for a five-story structure, and in the, in the B1 district, that requires a special exception. What this does is, is aside from that, it would determine, it would establish that the use requires a special use permit. So if in the process, for instance, if it were determined that, for whatever reason, there's a desire to have a two-story or a three-story assisted living facility, it would still come to the council for a special use permit with a recommendation from the city council.
Hmm, I see.
And so from a comp plan perspective, and we need to, we'll, we'll complete our comp plan analysis if this moves forward, but the B1 districts are intended to create a very vital, actually, a busy, commercial area. And so one of the rationales before this is, is this type of use appropriate for that type of a commercial district? Where you're trying to create a very lively street presence with retail and with the daytime uses and nighttime uses. And so that being the core purpose of the B1 district, is this appropriate to be a byright use in that district?
Okay, I think the first half of that answer I liked. The second half are the kind of concerns that I do want to hear more people talk about. I'm mildly concerned that we send a signal that somehow a facility that caters to our older population is not, I don't know how to put it any other way, not lively. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not contributing to the community in the way that we envision the community wanting to happen. And that, I don't think anybody means to do that, obviously, but that, that does trouble me a little bit. I mean, basically, we seem to be saying that we, we would like to have these facilities, I assume, but we would prefer that they be off in a corner somewhere where they don't get in the way of all the hip-hopping people doing cool things. And I don't know, that, that's just not quite the vibe that I want to give off. So I, I would see a facility like this as being an economic contributor, potentially. The numbers that we've seen, you know, suggest that they're not terrific economic contributors. Compared to the Burger King, I think it, you know, is, is going to throw off a multiple, but not a huge multiple more. Nonetheless, it's an economic contributor. It's, it's, you know, going to bring a pretty high-income component into the city because these are not inexpensive units to be assisted in. I mean, in, in every other respect, it's a, it's a good use, I think, that contributes to the community. And I, I just wouldn't want us to see, I, I would like to see a community, and let me put it more positively, where we, you know, have older folks, you know, front and center. Because, hey, you know, hopefully, we're all going to get older. And they don't have to be the only thing you see, but that is something I would like to see on our main streets. Thank you.
Let's just sort of talk about where we're at and what we're trying to do with the zoning amendment. It's not, we're not discussing the pros and cons of a particular project, but what we need to do as far as our zoning. So I, I hope that we can keep the focus to the broad approach that we're taking with our planning efforts, both in the comp plan that we're, that's underway, and both with the comp plan amendment, and also the next one that we're going to take up dealing with front setbacks, not the merits of any given project. I don't think that's the intent of the discussion that we're having.
I agree with that. I certainly did not intend to focus only on this project. In fact, my comments are, you know, writ more broadly. I wouldn't even brought it up except for the second part of the answer, which I do think is something that, in a community where we, we do spend a lot of time talking about the needs of young people, students, kids, families, that we just make sure that when we're talking about the zoning code and the comp plan, that we're talking about older folks too.
Mr. Kalin?
Thank you. I, I think what Wyatt was referring to was the location, not the desirability of assisted living, what a location. And I have to tell you, I think I may be around the table, maybe the oldest person around here. And I have no interest in being front and center when I'm elderly. So I don't know who you're talking about, but you're certainly not talking for me.
Can't top that. Wouldn't even try.
Yeah, that, that is a hard act to follow right there. And, and I would, I would just echo Mr. Kalin's point, which is what I, I think what we were talking about is, was not the desirability of the, of the project, but the, but the zoning issue. And I would just add to, to Mr. Duncan that assisted living also includes people of all ages. It's assisted living. It is not a senior center necessarily, and it's, it's, it caters to a variety of people who have a similar need. I'd just like to bring that to your attention.
Ron?
I don't have a whole lot to add. I'm, I'm not exactly sure still why we are concerned enough about this kind of facility. When I look at the list of things that require special uses, most of them have some outdoor effect on the neighborhood, that there are some concerns, and there's a reason it has to go through another process. And I'm not sure I understand exactly why here, but I'm willing to hear what the rest of the boards and commissions have to say about it.
Just curious, has there been any economic analysis by staff? You know, the per-acre tax revenue of this use versus some other uses?
Not on a, not the way you phrased the question.
Oh, I'm just curious, is there, there's no, we haven't done analysis of that? Okay.
I had a couple comments, and then we can gauge where we're at. One, one, at some point, we did have some discussion about public storage as well. Is that currently allowed by right?
No, it's not. And let me ask either Mr. Snyder or Mr. Fuller to speak to that.
It's allowed in M1 by right. Somebody, I think, in the past had talked about it in the context of a special exception, but...
But it's not permitted?
But you, you have, you have to have a B-zone to qualify for a special exception use.
But it's not a byright in a B right now?
It is not. It's only in the M1 district.
Okay, great.
So it's, it's actually not allowed by conditional use permit in the B districts either, right?
And then two, just looking at the, the text, somewhere along the lines of line 97, which sort of talks about what should be reviewed as far as whether to grant or not grant such special use applications. And we talked about the conditions of all adjacent usage and structures. And then when I look at the paragraph above it around line 79, it talks about said use will not adversely affect the present character or future development of the surrounding residential community. But there's no discussion of sort of the business community or other usage in there. It talks about purely residential. So there's sort of a disconnect if we're talking about a B1 district that we're concerned about just the residential and not current businesses or future redevelopment surrounding sites. So if staff can just look at that, it could be how this is all crafted together. I might be missing something, but that was sort of jumped out at me. And then two, I did send a note to the city attorney asking, just, just so the council can be informed about what the legal standards are for approving and not approving. I think it's sort of stated in the code itself, but I think we would benefit from knowing sort of what the legal standards are when it comes to this as we're making a determination of whether it makes sense to have it in an SC versus conditional use because the legal standards, I believe, are different. And we are, I think the council's very familiar with the SC process and what it takes to approve or not approve. But the conditional use, I don't know if council's been briefed since we haven't had an occasion to take on a conditional use, not, not, not one that's jumping out of mind. I just want to make sure the council's familiar with, other than what's, the words on the page, what's the legal standard if we approve or not disapprove before we make a decision of where this belongs, if anywhere at all, whether it's an SC or here. All right? Anything else? So we're, do we have some type of consensus as far as at least bringing this forward and getting input from boards and commissions?
Yep, yep.
So, planning commission members, you guys will be taking it up? Council members?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So let's have it on the agenda for our next regular meeting. And then I guess just to circle back on what's needed then, is sort of the full text, also staff report indicating that it's allowed right now in T-zoned. And then just the two, the addition that I referenced about whether we need to make any, any changes there. And then also the legal analysis on standards. Okay? All right. Thank you. The next zoning amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We would like to be excused. We're going on to our... Oh, are we?
Yeah, we've got one more. We've got the front setbacks.
All right.
This is, this is sidewalks.
There's a brush mark up there. Wait. Oh dear, oh dear. Dear, oh dear.
Okay, sidewalk.
The, and I would just, to note how this ordinance change would work, we do have height, lot, and yard regulations in our zoning code, obviously, and for the, the way those are laid out is by chart. And so, to effect this change, if you look in the B1 uses, as well as B2 and B3 uses, the setback from face of curb is listed as 14 feet slash 20 feet. And then, with the notation on it of note 11, in that table, it reads then, 20 feet setbacks for commercially zoned properties with frontage on the following streets, Broad Street and Washington, all others 14 feet. And so, this very simply requires a 20-foot setback from face of curb on Washington, Broad Street, and our commercial districts. That is what we've been asking for in all of our recent special exceptions, and so, and we've been getting it. I do think it would be worthwhile, as we go through, if this item moves forward, to discuss the areas where this will apply in more detail, and I think that that can naturally happen with the review by the planning commission. But I think this in broad brush lays out where it would apply in our commercial districts. There may be some other limited areas where we'd want it to apply as well.
Just if I can add one point before we go to the planning commissions on that. Wyatt, with what you just said, if the council moves on this at first reading, next hearing, but then subsequently we add other streets, can that be done between first and second reading? Or are we going back to first reading?
No.
That might be more a question for Jonathan.
My understanding for zoning amendments is that they can change between first reading and second reading with the benefit of, of public input and planning commission's recommendation.
They can. So, we can add additional streets if we chose to.
I'm looking at the city attorney. He's informed me of that recently, so I believe that to be the case.
All right. Okay. All right. Planning commissioners?
We're good?
Is that good?
We've been pushing for 20-foot sidewalks on commercials areas for...
Well, you ask and we deliver.
It's been on our list for at least three or four years. So, we're very happy to have it changed.
Council members, Phil?
Okay, I won't be the skunk at the planning commission and Dave Tarter's party here, but I would like to see, as part of consideration of this, some drawings of what a 20-foot sidewalk does at any area along Broad and Washington that backs up commercial area now, that backs up to residential area. So, in other words, like the village section of Broad Street, South Washington Street, where all those automobile uses are now, because I do think it's important for people to understand that if we do really put this, you know, in stone, that flexibility that we have when we want to move a property that's being developed away from the neighbors a little bit to make them feel more comfortable, you know, it's going to pinch the building. I mean, the building is not going to be able to encroach on the 20 feet, and we're going to want to move it away from the neighbors to which it backs up. And so, that's going to have some effect on the architecture of the building and the value of the, you know, the value of the property. So, I just would like to have some idea of which areas we are, you know, going to, going to feel that pinch.
Other councilors?
Oh, sorry, go.
Let's just go down the line.
Just question Wyatt. I'm sorry, Andy. What's the, how many feet is the North Gate from, is that 20 feet?
I believe that is 20.
North Gate?
I think it's 14 feet at places. There's seating areas that go back farther.
Because, I mean, you see, it looms over the street. It's going to do, you know, I think unfortunately, that's not going to add much in the way of walkability.
No, it is not.
And it's not going to, that's an example of why 14 feet is not a good place. And, and if the building has to get scrunched because the neighbors are concerned, so be it, but you can't, you can't have a 14, I mean, it just looms over Washington, and it's pretty unfortunate, but that's, it was approved in that way. So, that's, that's a living example of why you want 20 feet.
Joanna?
And I just, I just wanted to go back to the, you know, 101 of this particular ordinance. So, what we're doing is, over the years, we have, we have recommended, we have preferred 20 feet, and now we are mandating. Is that what I'm saying? Okay.
Just, just, I'm supportive of something like this going forward, but I do want to see sort of what the thinking of the planning commission and the community is about consequences of it. I do share some of the thinking that Phil may have on this, that there may be consequences that we're not aware of, but I also don't subscribe to the notion that just because we're creating wider sidewalks, which may be needed, so it's not looming over our pedestrian areas, that somehow that means that therefore the project is going to loom on, on the backside. I, I don't, I think that's a false premise. It's not one that I'm willing to accept, and I challenge other council members in the planning commission to not go there with developers, or else we're always going to be in a losing strategy. Most of these are coming forward as special exceptions. We've got a lot of tools at our disposal of simply saying, no, you can't get your project approved if it doesn't have the sidewalks, or if it's harmful to the community in some way with, without working out some of the architectural issues. So, there is the big stick of not approving, except if it's being done by right. So, I don't think it's a binary, just because you're adding sidewalk width, that you're going to get badly designed projects. That's going to be in part on what the will of the council and planning commission is as we move forward in boards and commissions, but shouldn't be taken as a given.
Ron?
Pretty, pretty much the same thing. It sets an expectation of where we think we need to go. There's always the ability to work out individual situations, but if we want to trend in a certain direction, we need to make that the default, so I don't have a problem with it.
Dave?
First, for clarification, we're not revising any rear setbacks, correct?
No.
Okay. So, I'm not sure either how this would impact the setbacks of a building, unless you start with the presumption that every building's entitled a certain amount of GFA, gross square foot, gross square footage or square floor area. But I think this 20-foot is long overdue. The buildings that we're being put up now are going to be here for the next 50 years or more. And so, we've got North Gate, as Ira said, looming over our streets forever, you know, for pretty much everybody in this room's lifetime. And I think we have to be better stewards of our city. I think pedestrian access is critical to the economic development of the city, particularly as you approach metro areas and other places where you're going to want people to walk. And when you add in landscaping that we've done in the past, you've got seven or eight feet of the sidewalk taken up with landscaping. And you have back of curb on Broad Street right now, you have a foot and a half or so, and you've got a paver set on end, then you have a five-foot planting strip, then you've got another paver set on end, and then you're trying to scrunch your pedestrians in there, and then maybe outdoor seating. I, I mean, I think 20 feet is difficult in places as well. I mean, what we all think want to have is a landscape, landscape strip. We want to have an appropriate width for people to walk. That's been discussed, a 10-foot clear width, and then we want to have outdoor seating. And, I mean, I haven't really even heard, and I would like to know, what are staff's thoughts on, for example, landscaping? Are we going to continue with that same strip, which eats up seven or eight feet of our sidewalks, such that even 20 feet, when you throw in 10-foot clear, and the idea of having some outdoor seating is tight as it is? I think we need to revisit our landscaping area and move to a more, more modern landscape strip. But outdoor seating, which I think most of us, if not all of us, want to have in our city, takes up some space as well. And so, to my mind, 20 feet is critical for that. I think it's going to build on itself over time. It'll create a synergy, a place where people want to be outside, not just driving in their car three blocks to get somewhere because there's no place to sit out front, or no nice pedestrian experience, but it's only part of it. We need to have crosswalks across Route 7, which we hardly have. It's a dangerous crossing in a lot of parts of the city that people don't want to do, so commerce stays on one side of the street instead of going to the other side of the street as well. You can have a building directly across, a cozy directly across from Panera, and nobody wants to cross that street. And so, someone's 100 feet away from a restaurant they might want to go to, but they don't want to go because we don't have a crosswalk. So, I think this is part of the solution, but there's plenty more things that we ought to be considering, and I hope we will do. One thing that I'd mentioned in our last city council meeting was having a pedestrian, the city council will take a pedestrian tour, a walking tour of our downtown areas, and I hope that that still will be on the agenda coming up in the near future, because I think that's critical for all of us to be on the same sheet of music as we replan and redevelop our downtown areas. So, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right. So, it sounds like there's consensus of getting this on the calendar for our next regular meeting, which is Monday.
Piece of humor, Dave, on this.
A sense of humor?
Piece of humor. That's, that area, Panera to Cozy, I ran into a poor fellow who was in a wheelchair, and he said he was, you know, could I help him out? I said, sure. Wanted to go over, cross the street. And so, I said, okay, let's, let's go up to the traffic light and cross over, and he said they couldn't. He was too weak, or whatever the case is. So, I actually crossed that part with a guy in a wheelchair.[1252.73][1252.73](Laughter). It was, it was a character building opportunity for me. (Laughter).
Thank you, planning commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do council members need a couple minutes of a break, or are we ready to keep going? Yeah, why don't, why don't we come back at nine, nine twenty?
Basically, a vacation of public street right of way by the city is like a sale of land. And so there's, there's a standard process for that. In this case, with the special exception and the final design of the buildings, Rushmark has requested the city to vacate seventy-one square feet. Basically, the purpose is, is getting back to setbacks. We have a twenty-foot setback in streetscape with the Rushmark project on West Broad Street. There's an irregular property line that runs across there that you can see some details in some of the exhibits. And there's a, part of that irregular line has about a one to two-foot variable area that runs, like I said, about one foot deep beyond the twenty feet. So, let's say at twenty-two feet, the city's property extends from the curb. And so what we're doing is we're vacating that foot or two for about a fifty-foot run that varies from a few inches to two feet and giving that to us. They can line up the buildings and have that frontage. And it's really as simple as that. And in return, we're getting dedications that total almost three thousand square feet for the seventy-one feet that we're vacating. That's the streetscape and part of the street on West Broad, which is about fifteen hundred square feet and about thirteen hundred down along West Annandale Road for getting full streetscape in both those areas. And so, that'll be a combination of dedications and easements. The first fourteen feet's dedication and the last six feet is, is easement. At least that's what we propose at this point. So, the total is twenty-nine hundred and ten square feet that we're getting from them. So, that's the exchange that's, that's really occurring in, in this. And so, we've written up an ordinance that reflects this. I did get meets and bounds for the dedication today. I didn't have them on Friday. So, I will add them into the current ordinance. We did have the meets and bounds for the vacation, seventy-one hundred square, seventy, seventy-one square feet. And so, I'll add that into the ordinance and so.
Any questions by council members?
I just had two, I had just two quick questions. One, so I take it if we don't do this, you kind of have this un-uniformed building, which I take it wouldn't be aesthetically as good as it could be if it was uniform?
I think, I think, I'll let Stefan comment on that if you want. Just, just right here on the microphone. He's, he's the applicant for this request.
We, so we're trying to conform the streetscape to the footprint of the building and provide you also the maximum pedestrian accessibility throughout West Broad Street and also on Annandale Road, as well on the backside of the building. So, I believe it is a, is a preference of ours to go ahead with this and conform.
So, I take it what would happen otherwise is the building on the, it'd be sort of like, it'll look like this rather than uniform on one side?
It would be, it would be offset not, not an even two feet. It would be a staggered two feet kind of thing. So, over that fifty-foot run from one inch to two feet.
And I take it that doesn't look as good or as appealing?
Yes, it's not squared up as much. So, it's as minor as that.
And then as far as the, what, the property that we're getting in return, not that I would ever turn down land for free, but if it's already going to be streetscaping, et cetera, that's happening, does, do we really want to own that property if we're going to have to maintain it versus the applicant still having its streetscape there and maintaining it themselves? That, that part of it is not clear what the advantage is of, of getting?
In terms of getting the streetscape, I mean, our standard city position is when we get streetscape that we maintain that and we get that in a dedication or easement or combination? Is that the question?
I guess my question is a little different. Where that, where the additional property that the city would now own if this does go through, what is that currently going to be used at if we do nothing?
Well, I think one thing, there's a, there's a question of maintenance, but there's also a question of, of access, I believe. And so, part of it is land that's, that's part of the, you know.
Let me, let me, let me just kind of be clear about why I'm asking this question. I sort of get why we would be giving up the pieces, but gaining the pieces, I just don't want it to be without understanding why we're getting it. And all of a sudden, it's sort of a pain in the rear issue for the developer and the developer saying, okay, city, you take care of what we don't want. So, I, I need to get a better sense of, you know, it's great that we're getting land, but why?
I mean, we're, we're getting it for the public street right of way. In other words, we're expanding the streetscape from what it is now there, which is fourteen feet because it's actually built in that section. We're expanding it to twenty feet. They're going to actually rebuild it all in front of it. And so, we'll get the additional right of way in full dedication. If, in the sale of a land that the city's doing with the parking lot, if you look at exhibit attachment four, it looks like this here. You can see the irregular line that exists for that property. Or one is you're trying to line up the building. And two is if you see this jump right here, there's a big piece of the, the parking lot land, which is the center property, which is parcel fifty-two dash thirty, three oh nine, four one four. A large part of that parcel, the driveway to the current post office, there's ownership of the street that comes out, juts out. So, we're actually selling that to them and they're buying it from us on a separate contract. And then, then, then they're going to give it back to us afterwards. Both the street and the additional right of way for the full twenty-foot streetscape and streetscape down on West Maple. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is there's a large net of property that's coming back to us, you know, for this exchange, let's call it.
So, part of it is going to allow us to do further?
Well, it's going to give us the street that we're selling.
I'm sorry, which street are we talking about?
This right here. This part is, it's like ten feet out and into the, the travelway.
And that's on Broad?
Yeah. And it's owned by us as part of this parcel. And so, we're selling it to them. They're paying per square feet for all the, the actual terrain and then part of the street. And then they're giving it back to us in a dedication, plus additional dedication for sidewalk and pedestrian. So.
So, we get part of Broad back, essentially?
Yeah. We're, we're getting the part of Broad we're selling to them back, plus we're getting streetscape on both ends.
Got it. Where we can do more work on.
Yeah. Which will have, you know, more, more pedestrian liability and, and access.
Is there one of the attachments, and I may have missed it, that actually shows what land we'd be acquiring?
There's, there's a, in terms of the first attachment, well, actually, this attachment four is, is really showing the net of it before the sale. So, there's not something that's on the back end, other than you've got this deed of consolidation, dedication, easement, attachment five, that actually puts that in a deed format. That's a draft right now that talks about all those properties and stuff coming back to us in, in a text, text form. So, the graphic.
So, graphically, it's this little piece right up here, right, Gary?
It's that plus, plus a large run across the front of at least six variable feet. And then you've got down on West Annandale as well, streetscape being established down there. So, but the net is two thousand nine hundred and ten square feet.
But the net would be, we're getting part of roadway back on Broad where we could do different things with it later on. And then two, we're getting more landscaping that we can do, that we would control?
Yes.
The, the piece on Broad really is the streetscape, right? It's the sidewalk, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's basically the sidewalk, like the, the extra from the fourteen to the twenty. But then you've got this piece that's actually out in the drive aisle right now of, of the travelway of the road. So.
Other council member? Dave?
I mean, I would just suggest that things don't always have to line up perfectly for, you know, hey, we can't main, we can't get the developer to maintain X, Y, and Z because it's part of this or part of that. Or, we have to make this line pretty. You know, there's things that can be done through easements and all sorts of different mechanisms. So, I would just say to staff that, you know, I'm not opposing what's going on here, but for future reference, I don't think everything has to be perfectly aligned, you know, in a straight line for the goals of the city to be accomplished, such as having a sidewalk in a certain area or having the developer maintain something or vice versa. That it doesn't have to be a fee transfer in every instance to make everything kind of a straight line. There's plenty of ways through easements or just conditions of special exception to require or permit certain actions to be taken. So, I would just suggest that. And I guess the other thing I would say is that, I know we discussed this, I think, at a prior meeting, but the timing of the city's conveyance, is that tied in with the conveyance back to the city as well? In other words, the city's not doing this too far in advance? Do we take care of that issue?
It is. If you look at the conditions at line one ninety-three, it, those three conditions are intended to bundle basically all the transactions together in one transaction. The sale of the city land, the swap, it all happens, and it all happens late in the process. It happens after the issuance of, of building permits.
Anything else on this? Alright. Thanks. Alright, we're on the next slide.
Good evening, council. We have a legislative item before you for your consideration in support of a bill that Congressman Moran has submitted to the one hundred and thirteenth Congress that would mend the current federal offset program to allow the federal government to withhold tax refunds in order to reimburse localities for delinquent taxes. The treasurer and I are submitting this for council's consideration as a request from Vice Mayor Snyder to bring it to council for discussion. Unfortunately, Treasurer Kathy Kay is under the weather and not feeling well with pneumonia, so she sends her regrets. But she did ask me to express to you all her support for this legislation. It would simply add another toolbox to the collection of taxes owed by delinquent taxpayers. As you'll see on line sixty-two, the current outstanding total tax receivables is six hundred and fifty thousand. That's about one point three five, one point five percent of total taxes. So, it's a low dollar amount. But it is another tool that would allow collections for folks that leave Virginia. Right now, you could have a Virginia tax offset. The refund is withheld and sent to localities, but it's not permitted under the federal. So, when they leave Virginia, then it's a much more difficult situation to recoup taxes owed to the locality. And so, the resolution that begins on line seventy-three just outlines council's support of the federal legislation and directs the city manager to forward such support to the congressman as this bill works its way through the federal process.
Any, any questions for Cindy? Johanna?
I'm sorry, Cindy. I just need to understand this a wee bit better. So, so what this legislation allows is that should I be delinquent in my taxes to the state?
No, to the city.
To the city. The city can, what, assign?
The city can ask the state.
The state, the Commonwealth of Virginia?
The Commonwealth of Virginia to coordinate with the feds, the federal treasury, to act as our agent and ensure our money comes back through withholding federal tax refunds to the delinquent taxpayer. So, if you see on line forty-six, sort of the priority order for payment of an offset, if a tax refund is filed initially, any past due federal taxes are refunded or offset, state child support, past due federal agency debt, and past due state income tax, and then we, localities would be added to the priority order. So, if a taxpayer was getting a refund, one, one through five would be reimbursed to the appropriate entity.
And if I move to Pennsylvania?
Because it was a, a federal offset add, then we could still collect the taxes. Right now, we can only withhold from state refunds.
Okay.
So, this would be an added toolbox to actually collect delinquent taxes.
An added tool for the toolbox. Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kayla. It's late and first day max.
Lots of toolboxes.
Alright. Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. So, why don't we plan to have this on the calendar for Monday as well? And then again, just for staff, if it's, since this may go before the executive branch, just my name can't be associated over that.
I have one question. Is this basically, as Johanna was mentioning, for people who move? Because it's a little difficult to understand someone who doesn't file their income tax properly and then gets a refund if you can't afford to pay.
Well, it, it could be folks that owed past time, but now this one year, they're getting a refund. And so, if they stayed in Virginia and they owed taxes, we could recoup from state refund. But if that wasn't sufficient to cover their local debt, it goes to the federal.
Alright. So, why don't we talk about the calendar? The one, or any reports, the one thing I wanted to report on, I believe there may have been an, an omission that was made in, in the paper regarding a meeting that happened with Faust. As I had reported to council, I was planning on being there. So, I was in fact at that meeting. And so, it was John Lawrence, who was not mentioned in that article either, at least on the paper edition. But I wanted to have the public and the council members rest assured that I didn't tell you all one thing and not show up to a meeting. So, I was there. It was actually a very positive, good meeting as we moved forward with our discussions on a variety of items with, with the county. So, it's a very good discussion. Alright? And the points that we essentially reiterated and, and was one that at least as far as the CIP is concerned right now, the notion is to expand Mount Daniel, but given enrollment numbers and growths, the school board felt that they had to do their due diligence and that's why they put out the RFP and that we would continue to work with, with Board Member Faust and also with the community adjacent to the property to continue discussing the issues as they come up and that will keep Member Faust apprised of meetings that we have with the community, or at least the school board will. And if we, as a council, have any meetings, we'll, we'll do the same. We'll copy his staff member, letting him know what's happening. Why, am I missing anything as far as the discussion?
No. And I would just reiterate that, particularly the mayor's comments to Supervisor Faust noting that the city council has approved a CIP that assumes expansion on the site. And he did, he did note that point, as, as well as the school board's intention to issue an RFP.
And, and one other point that I'll just add, just so the council members are aware of, that, that I also put out there. Apparently, and again, none, none of the members of this body were here for the last Mount Daniel expansion. But there may have been, for whatever reason, some lack of communication. Again, that's at least how it's being portrayed or, or baggage. Again, I'm not casting any aspersions on anybody, but that's sort of the feedback that we've gotten. What I did tell Board Member Faust is that, you know, that, that's, that's history, that this council is not the same council or, as, as before. that this council is not the same council or as, as before, that, that we're all coming to this afresh and that we're committed into having positive communications with his office and also with the adjacent neighborhood and his constituents and keeping him apprised as far as what we're doing and what planet, what, what we're planning on doing. But again, reemphasizing where we're at right now, but doing our due diligence. Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that to get directly from people who were at the meeting, their interpretations. One question is, was there commentary by Mr. Faust regarding concerns in the community about selling the property and having homes built on that? Was that, did that issue come up?
I honestly can't recall if it did or not. I know that we had some discussions about it. I don't know if it would be, if I would, if I would say concerns or not, but it was certainly raised.
If I recall, there was a general comment made that, that in terms of some of the initial feedback that he'd been getting from constituents of his, that there were concerns, both from some that were concerned about an expansion of a school and concerns from others who were concerned that the city would sell the, the site and be redeveloped for residential uses. So that comment was made that, that he was getting it from sort of both sides. He shared that with us. And, and so I think that's the extent that that was discussed.
Now that Wyatt mentions it, that, that's sort of the tenor of it, that he's sort of getting all kinds of, you know, depends on who he asks and who's contacting him. So he's here. So, you know. And then John Lawrence, sort of, I think, is the point person to, for the school board to talk to the community.
Talk to him?
To the community, to the adjacent community.
Fairfax.
To Fairfax. So, that's all I had to report.
Time for council comments?
Other, other councilmember comments and schedule issues? Ms. Barry. Ms. Barry, and then.
Yeah, sorry. A comment, and perhaps this is where Phil was going, and a, and a scheduling question. I just wanted to mention to the rest of council that Phil and I enjoyed a tour of the newly renovated Thomas Jefferson. Very, very impressive. Things were, were bustling. People, you know, teachers were excitedly putting together their classrooms. It's, you know, it's a, it's a marvelous piece of structure and of course, houses 700 children, which is, is going to be a very interesting, you know, very interesting challenge for, for the, the teachers. But anyway, they, they certainly took time to, to walk us through and we appreciate that, I'm sure, very much. My second question is to Wyatt. Mr. Shields, what will it take to trigger the scheduling of the pedestrian plan?
Well, this is a good council scheduling discussion. It is on the council's schedule. And it's scheduled for.
January 3rd.
January 3rd.
Scheduled for November 18th. And that was a discussion of, of the council about, right before the break, about scheduling that, putting that back on the agenda.
And I also understand that there was a discussion about wanting to see how the Southwest Street project moved forward before this was going to be, I guess, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd love to see this moved up, but if that was a trigger. The West Street, yes, the West Street, the Northwest Street project.
Yeah, when, when the, when we took the hiatus on the, on the PED Plan, the idea, as it was articulated, was let's get out of the theoretical discussion about process and about complete streets and let's go do some projects and implement a, in, you know, a neighborhood engagement process and have some success actually on the ground. So we have been proceeding along those lines. We have engineering for the Northwest project. We've had two recent correspondences with the neighbors just to keep them up to, up to date and to inform them of what was going on. And we're about to schedule, I think, a follow-up meeting. And I don't think a date for that has yet been set. But we're on the verge of being able to go back to the neighborhood with some potential plans.
At, at the risk of, of beating this particular horse, I just wanted to, to certainly emphasize my, my strong interest in seeing some resolution of the pedestrian plan before the end of the year. So I would, I mean, if things can move with alacrity, that's, that's terrific. That only gives us one actual, it gives us two meetings in which the council can take a decision. Just.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can, as things are coming off and on the calendar, we can look to move it up.
There's a spot.
If it makes sense to tie it with what's happening on West Street. So Wyatt, if you can take a look at seeing if we can advance it.
Okay.
And again, I think the notion is, how do we, just so there's no misinformation happening about this, but it's how to move forward with the PED Plan and not get into some of the issues that we faced before, which folded it like taking away parking for bike lanes. So I think what we'd be expecting is those issues that didn't go forward, that there would be more, more finesse and more outreach once we reconsider it, that the controversial issues would not be coming up, but we could actually move on something that, that we can get to agreement on. I think that's the notion. At least, that's how I'm envisioning it. It's not the same document that would come forward.
Right, right.
Otherwise, Ms. Barry would be on the edge of a nervous breakdown.
That would not, that'd be deeply unattractive.
I do have a question. I was caught by surprise by the statement that John was the point person. What does that mean, the point person, you know? To do what with whom?
Well, let me forward the question to, to the, to the school board and to the superintendent just so we understand exactly how they've laid out their roles and their designations. I think the way it was described is that because of his background in the planning commission, he's going to take a leadership role in, on the capital improvement part of the school board's work. But let me, beyond that generality, let me.
Well, I'll just blurt it out. I mean, I'm extremely nervous. I'm on the edge of a nervous breakdown. Having this, a school board represent the city in effect on the discussions on that, someone from the city has to be there. I mean, I don't know what kind of point person this is. It's not, we've never had this discussion in this council about point people and what they would do. But they're talking about what the city will be doing, what the city wants, or what the school, without the. Well, I mean, yeah, but if they're representing, people outside of a jurisdiction aren't in, in conditions to make decisions about what authority this person has, what authority they don't have, what they're.
No, I think that's a good point. So perhaps, perhaps we should talk to, and I can raise it with Susan as well, about just ensuring that we've got some council presence when there's meetings with, with the community as well and that we're looped in to the communications that they're having.
Do people have different interpretations of meetings?
But you, you were there, right?
No, I think this is, this is referring to the. The school board's meetings that may occur with the community.
Ah.
And by community, I mean the adjacent Fairfax. Yeah.
People have different interpretations of the, of the, I mean, this is a longstanding theatrical conceit about one event and all the different interpretations, and we only have one person?
Well, that's a good point. So Wyatt, will you get a note out to Tony?
Longstanding theatrical conceit. That is, that is.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's a fair point. We don't, we don't want to be in a situation where the council members are saying one thing as they're, as they're getting possibly contacted by neighborhood members or other people on the board, the county board, et cetera, and, and we're not speaking with, you know, knowing what the right hand is saying, you know. You get the drift. It's, it's, we just need to all be on, on message and know what we're doing.
Mr.
I believe Ron.
Well, I just had one minor schedule thing. I'm, I'm not going to be here Monday because I'm headed to Hawaii for a 30th anniversary trip, so.
That's my excuse.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, boy.
You kids.
Yeah, 30th anniversary, what a kid.
Without Mr. Tarter here, I'll just observe with pleasure that we have observed the fifth Monday off on September 30th. And in this instance, that is my birthday and I will also be out of town. So I hope we will not schedule an extraordinary meeting on Monday, September 30th. And thank you, Johanna, for bringing up the tour that we took. And thank you for the Water FAQ draft, which came to our doorsteps late this afternoon from Amy. And it's due in the morning at nine o'clock, so go home and get to work. Okay, all right. But at any rate, tomorrow, so take a look. If you didn't get a chance to look at your inbox, the Water FAQ, so that it'll be available presumably on Saturday to hand out.
Yeah, and I think that's intended to be a living document, right? Because it's going to be on the website. So as we get questions, we can have.
She was going to try to print some out for Saturday.
Yeah. But we may need to add questions, et cetera.
Don't print too many.
All right. Other announcements? So Fall Festival in Taste Falls Church for this weekend. I'll be one of the judges. So. I'll be one of the judges.
Also recycling extravaganza.
And the cycling extravaganza. And then.
And Sunday is the Education Foundation.
Run.
Run.
So lots of city events this weekend.
And the Water Forum.
And just for council's awareness, we did meet with Mike Volpe and League of Women Voters rep this afternoon with Fairfax Water folks to just sort of go over the room layout and the plan for the, the program. What is intended is there'll be an introduction by Vipas and League of Women Voters. Then I would stand up, make a presentation with a PowerPoint slide on the terms of the sale and other background information. Chuck Murray will be there to present who Fairfax Water is, what they do, and how they view, if, if this is approved, how the transaction would be affected. And then we'd answer questions. So our hope is presentations, 30 minutes no longer between the two of us and then questions for the rest of the time.
And we've noticed this is a public gathering?
Yes.
For, so council members can be there and speak freely if they choose to. Ira.
This is very anecdotal, but comments in the places I frequent. One of the concerns that have been, I've not been successful in explaining, is they say, well, the system's worth hundreds of millions of dollars, that's what it costs to construct. And, you know, you sold it too cheap, it's not enough, and so the concept of a wasting asset seems to be unable. I mean, you buy a car and 15 years later, you go to sell it, you're not going to get the same price for it. But it seems to be something that is, is not getting through, that just because it cost us $360 million over the years to build, it doesn't mean it's worth $360 million. Cannot seem to get that point through. So you may want to, you may want to concentrate somewhat on that issue.
Heard that too. And it's partly reinforced by the fact that we explain to people that we've so carefully maintained the system. I mean, yes, your car that you bought 15 years ago isn't worth what you paid for it. But if it becomes, you know, vintage antique and it's in terrific shape, it does have a higher blue book value. So anyway, Mr. Kalin's point, though, is one that I hear too, and the only. The only way I can think to respond is to say, yeah, but you know, to keep it up for the next 30 years, it's going to cost $600 million. And, you know, do we have the throwaway to do that?
All right. And then just out of reminder, council members to follow John's guidance as far as any comments you may make publicly, including on Saturday. So I did not mean to speak freely. I meant speak according to council's advice. So, all right. I know that we had a closed session scheduled for this evening, but speaking to Ms. Barry, and I believe that we've lost now two council members, that we also needed some documents that we don't have. So I propose that we actually move that to Monday. So unfortunately, Mr. Pepe won't be there, but.
Talk to Mr. Pepe.
But I, I think we can get the input from Mr. Pepe via Ms. Barry. All right. If I can get a motion to adjourn. If I can get a second. It's Mr. Kalin on the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any objections, we're adjourned. Sean?